Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 23 meeting of the Plumb and Board of Selectmen. We usually start by going over the ground rules, since I think everyone here has heard them. We'll just briefly say that we try to practice patient urgency. We try to speak in a time-sensitive manner. We do have a parking lot for issues that come up that maybe are worthy but that we can't get to at any one time and we don't want to lose them. We do try to bring along some joy and laughter to the serious work that we need to do. And we do, we are trying to create as welcoming an environment as possible so that volunteers are more interested in joining and helping this downtown government. It has been our habit of late to take a few moments for silence, and so we'll do that now. A few moments to be used any way we like, maybe to just prepare for the evening, maybe to just have some gratitude for the chance to do the kind of work that we get to do. So, again, welcome, everyone. So, the agenda has been published. Are there other items that people would like to be considered this evening on the agenda? Okay, then we move full speed ahead. We have the FinCom joining us shortly, and I think a fair part of the meeting may revolve around FinCom issues, both in terms of their budget projections, some about the Silver Lake School Committee meetings many of us have been attending, and then maybe a little bit about municipal revenue growth factors, so issues. So, we'll save those for when FinCom comes along. Any preference of what we work on first, colleagues?
No.
Okay, so, I think maybe because we're feeling some time pressure, we could go ahead and have a discussion about the annual town report photo for the front. Kristin has shared with us a bunch of possibilities, and I'm hoping maybe we can make a decision. I actually really like the one that she shared with us for the Boston Post-Kane. One of the problems with this one is it's horizontal instead of vertical. Other than that, in avoiding several controversial ones, I thought maybe this one appealed to me the most. It adds some color to it.
Is there two versions to that?
Yes, this is the close-up, and then there was a...
Which one did you have? Now you like that one.
I like this one.
I guess that's the one.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. All right. Wow, you accomplished something already. We're quite well ahead. Okay?
Okay.
Great. So, do you have all you need for that? And we're on schedule to...
It's been sent to the press, so it's inside.
Very well done. Okay, let's see. Well, why don't we go to annual town meeting preparations, including preparing warrant articles? Anything from your end on that, Dale? Anything new?
Nothing new, nothing beyond what I had sent you. You know, for the articles, I don't have any, no one else has submitted anything new at this point.
Do we have an answer on rescinding that vote we took last year on the stabilization?
No, interestingly enough, you mentioned that I did ask and didn't get an answer on it. I'll remind her to, I mean, I believe it's just as simple as rescinding the vote taken at the annual town meeting, article such and such, and then a brief explanation of what that article was. I think it's probably that easy, but let council figure it out.
The other thing is on the solar, there's a little confusion with E&amp;D on, or with the guy from Borrego. But that project has been approved by town meeting. We have the authority to sign that one.
Okay. That was the one we, we had approval to sign one at last year's...
And it's that one. It's the one that's on the south side of 44. But we do need an article for the power purchase agreement from them, and then we need both pilot and power purchase for Blue Wave.
Are you sure we need a power purchase agreement article? I mean, that's, that's an executive decision by the board. It's not, generally, that's not, I mean, the pilot, I'll check into that. I don't believe you need one for a power purchase agreement.
Okay.
I think as a board, you can make that decision because it's in the best interest of the town. But you need one for...
Blue Wave on Lake Street.
For Blue Wave.
The pilot.
All right, I'll put one in for, I'll put one in for them. And, okay.
Then, have you gone through the, like, the normal housekeeping ones when they...
Yeah, the standards are there. I mean, the standard, you know, all the standards are there. The assessors have sent me their annuals, their standards, the standard articles, the appraisal articles from the treasurer's office. Those are, those are...
Second payment to Kingston.
Payment to Kingston, that's, that's in there.
It's in there already?
Well, yeah, it's a, I mean, it's a, I mean, it was agreed at the other time, at the last town meeting to pay that, but I, I mean, I think you have to actually sort of renew it every year with the town meeting, so that, that will be in there.
So, you're on that?
I just have the exact amount to, of what it will be this year. And I think that's it. I mean, I, it's not really been a big rush to put a lot of articles on from anyone, which is...
Now, the fire chief asked for money, right?
Well, with that possible exception, there hasn't been a rush to put any big-money articles on, yeah. Yeah. The fire chief has one for a, one for a vehicle. Beyond that, there's the normal lease agreements for turning over police cruisers, you know, on an annual basis, and...
Jimmy mentioned today that he's going to ask for money for some sort of a hot mix years' long.
Right, right. He did tell me that last week, that he was going to send me an article for that. I believe it's a $15,000 item.
$15,000, yeah.
And I haven't seen it from him yet, but, you know, got placeholder in for it, so when it comes in, it comes in.
That's a hot mix for road repair, is that?
Yeah, he took, now, when he does just little repairs, he does coal pack, and they don't last long.
Yeah. So, is that, that's for special or regular town meeting?
Capital.
Yeah.
That would be capital item.
Well, it'll come out of the stabilization fund, yeah, I would think.
We should mention that to FinCom.
I think Jimmy did, when he...
Yeah, I believe he did, when he, when he met with them.
So, back to the school stabilization. I mean, we're putting together that article. We haven't actually voted how we feel about it yet. I'm not sure how I feel about rescinding it.
I thought when he did the thing, I thought we voted already unanimously, so wasn't I calling?
Maybe it was.
Yes, I thought it was awesome.
I have to go back and check. I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel.
In some of the other meetings, I also am hesitant now.
Really?
Yeah, it came up a lot in the last Silver Lake meeting last Friday afternoon, and just maybe needs a little more thought. I still think I'm pretty much in favor of rescinding it, but...
And I may well be. It's just, I, in the sort of negotiation and back and forth on the Pembroke money, it seemed like that might be another vehicle if we ever got to the point of some kind of consensus or compromise. I mean, maybe we'll end up discussing that more when FinCom comes.
It was, it's...
I mean, it's probably moot, since the other two towns haven't done it, and I doubt they will.
Yeah, all, all of it is is a message that, you know, we're sick of this, you know. It was interesting, and the thing, that Marilyn Brown got from a friend of hers, I guess at DOR, in there, it talks about this case law that says that to take money out of E&amp;D, it has to be done at an annual town meeting.
And in fact, I forwarded that to you. It doesn't, it doesn't say has to, it, that whole...
Case law. What it says is case law.
Well, that whole document was sort of recommendations and, you know, what they would prefer, and actually, that's why I drew attention to it when I mailed that over. I mean, it's interesting that they said that. I very much read that as, as a suggestion.
Well, I tried to Google. I didn't spend a lot of time, but I tried to Google this afternoon, see if I could find the case law. Because it would be, if there were some cases that, you know, at least mention that, it would be worth getting it.
Is it, is it too late for you to go to law school?
Probably yes. You want, you want me to leave now? You can't wait until May 50th.
Okay. So, the one other thing, I want to just float this idea to the Board of Selectmen, and I think it needs to get thought through more, but it occurs to me that there will be some articles on this year's town meeting warrant that probably need a bunch of words, and that it would be really helpful to further educate town meeting participants. Now, the town moderator each year has a session at the library on the Saturday before town meeting. Very nice, not very well-attended. I, it occurs to me that it might not be a bad idea, when we get a little bit closer to town meeting, to offer a Board of Selectmen session that was giving over to public education about some of these articles. So, just wanted to sort of float that, and we can work on a date when we get closer, but, you know, it feels to me that town meeting sometimes isn't, or frequently, isn't the place to try to give over information, since we each get two minutes to give our point of view, so, so we'll keep working on that.
Well, the zoning bylaw change, but you're going to have a hearing. I, you know, I don't know how well-attended that will be, but...
I mean, I'd like to really push this and make sure everyone in town knows about it and welcome here for an evening to really hear that. I mean, there'll be that, there'll be Comcast, there'll be the Public Safety Buildings, there'll be the budget.
Well, at this point, there's nothing going to, with the Public Safety thing, is there?
Well, it's actually next agenda items. All right, so that takes care of town meeting, so may as well just talk about that a second. It sounded last week, I'm going to go sit in the audience on this in a minute, but it sounded last week like FinCom was not interested in voting with us to offer funds right now, so the next time to do that would be with a special town meeting article or a regular town meeting article to get funds. And actually, you, you, there's, that's already in there, isn't there? An article seeking 25...
Well, it's, again, it's sort of a placeholder if it went, if it went in that direction. You know, like you said, I think the Finance Committee is reluctant to exercise their prerogative under the bylaw to, you know, to vote with the board to authorize it. So, in that case, if the board still wants to do it, which seems to be a good idea at this point, then it would be in the form of an article at the, at the annual or the special.
Oh, which needs their approval.
Well, they would review it just as much as any other financial article, sure. I mean, I...
No, it can't, town meeting can't pass it without their approval and our approval.
Or, isn't a two-thirds vote of town meeting?
It's a two-thirds vote, but if you read the law, the first thing that has to happen is we have to recommend it, FinCom has to recommend it, and the capital...
So, let me just go act as a citizen, and I'm glad to talk about that further.
Put a different hat on, so we know what the rule of...
I'm sitting down here.
One-hand haberdasher.
So, I, I'm now speaking as a private citizen, not as a selectman, not as a member of CPC. I, I think part of the problem seemed to me last week is we had the meeting a few weeks ago, when we, the selectmen, presented what we were thinking about with the Public Safety Building. Unfortunately, FinCom had their own meeting that night, and inadvertently, they came in cold last week. They didn't know much about it, and I think if anything came out of last week is the lesson learned, that there's a fair amount of campaigning to do on this and a fair amount of education. My sense was, just my sense, in sitting here, is that they might well be in favor of taking money from capital stabilization, but they just needed better understanding of why there wasn't a committee, of why there wasn't an architect that were going a different way about it. And I think we all know the answers to that, because we've had meetings after meeting, but we just didn't get that point across well.
Also, I felt that they seemed to think it was just so close to regular town meeting, and why do something beforehand? They were unwilling to push that.
And I think maybe we didn't get across also the potential timeline that we're looking at now, is more money in the spring, so we have the spring and summer to work on a proposal that fairly likely would be a special town meeting in the fall, which I think actually makes a huge amount of sense, in terms, again, of educate, a chance for us to make sure all of our ducks are in a row, and absolutely a chance to fully educate people on why we're doing a little differently than they might have expected.
Okay.
I'm going to change hats again. Good chance to get exercise.
Turn your beard around.
What's that?
Turn your beard around.
It's, it's just as white on the other side. Okay, so, well, pig access preparations, I guess we may as well go to that next. Not much to say there. I am waiting, last week, we were offered another version of the town meeting article that might fulfill the new legislation and the DOR interpretation of those. I sent that off to town council, I shared that with you. I'm waiting to hear from town council, and that's where we're at on that. We have two or three versions.
Well, I think that version is an attempt to get around the annual appropriation, and I don't think that can happen. I would think that that's going to be the...
And I, you know, I unfortunately have had the opportunity to speak to enough different lawyers on this to get a lot of different answers, and the one that I'm hearing most frequently now is maybe, maybe it does require an annual town meeting, but the money could only be appropriated for cable access. Couldn't be appropriated for anything else anyway, so it would be utterly insane for town meeting not to approve annual appropriation. It's not like that money could be used for anything else, so if they turned it down, it would just sit there unused, which would be silly. So, it becomes another moot point, I think. So, in any event, I'm waiting to hear from Karen, or, I'm waiting to hear from Lauren, and that's where we're at. And I guess just the other thing to say, there was a little confusion last week on our cable advisory committee, and I think I also was a little confused on that, and it seems to me right now, we have a committee of one, which is Karen Foy, who's done tremendous amount of work along the way, and has tremendous expertise in all these areas. And it seems to me that at this point, this is an advisory committee, one that advises the selectmen on a decision that they have to make. That being the case, they're not obligated, as a committee of one and as an advisory committee, to have minutes and have an agenda and do open meeting law. What I really wanted to just make clear, if it wasn't clear last week, is all the work that Karen's done and how valuable she has been to the town. I think we have at several meetings, I think she has asked, I have asked, and maybe we've all asked, that hopefully there are other people that would be interested in volunteering to this committee, that this could become a committee as it is in other towns, and that it could become an active committee that went to more formal committee status, making more decisions, and we are certainly going to need more help along the way. So, another plea tonight, if there are people out there that are interested in cable, in cable access, in public education, in getting involved in town government, we would love to have them. Karen, you want to cheer 'em on out there? Come help Karen, she's a wonderful woman to work with. All right. So, anything else on cable access? Oh, I, the only thing, I guess I should mention, I was at the Carver-Halifax Board of Directors meeting, I think it was last week, still having some issues with the playback on Channel 15, but our meetings hopefully are being put up now on YouTube each week and should be available there until they get the playback thing straightened out.
I actually wanted to watch and see what kind of trouble you guys got into last week, and so I tried, and the, on Channel 13, it says that it's on at noon and 8:00 PM. So, I tried to record it, and what I got is a big bunch of Plymouth Rotary's charity auction, or something like that, so I don't know.
Did you contribute?
And I also, I didn't, I didn't find it on YouTube, too. It's only been, I think, till January 22nd, something like that.
One of the discussions at that meeting was that they are behind in putting them on, and that it would make sense to put the most recent ones on first, so, and I think, I don't have my notes here. The channels are going to change. I think we're going to be on 15 with Halifax ultimately now.
He said last week, the line of week would be government on Channel 15, education on 14, and public on 13.
Exactly, yeah. That's my understanding. A fluid situation, I, they ran into a lot more issues than they expected to, and...
I did go to 15, and Halifax's FinCom meeting was on there, so there was...
Over and over and over again. No, it's been a difficult transition, and it will get smoother. At that Board of Directors meeting last week, a decision was made prioritizing equipment, that it may be that rather than equipping the selectmen's rooms in Halifax, and hopefully Plumb, then if we're able to join, with cameras, that a higher priority might be the playback equipment to get this stuff up really fast. So, it's still a few months away, but they fully recognize the problem and are working on it. Next agenda item is, well, a follow-up on the DOR report. I just, I put that on the agenda just in part because I don't want it to get lost, and just with budget being the way it is, the Board of Selectmen had a budget request in for town coordinator to have more hours, and I'm, I'm not aware that FinCom's made a final decision on that, but with things as tight as they are, I could imagine that that may be something that's hard to do. So, the two pieces, so that we don't totally lose track of the DOR report is, John, you had mentioned a few weeks ago that you were going to sit with the accountant on some auditing things, and I don't know if you had a chance to follow up on some of that.
We have, but it's kind of died in the, on the vine because of no funding. Most all, those things require some sort of funding.
Yep, and I, I understand that, and that is frustrating, and it's actually, it's a frustrating thing right now. It does occur to me, maybe we need to get through the next couple of weeks of budget creation and preparation for town meeting, that maybe a reasonable, simple next step is just to get department heads together, and, I mean, one of the things in that report, sort of more global rather than a specific thing, was having assessor, treasurer, accountant, selectman, FinCom member, meeting periodically to just get better communication going. That's one we can certainly do, and I would hope to get that going pretty soon. At least it'll give us better communication and maybe a chance to kind of dive in and see if there are any parts of that we can work on even without a lot of funding. So, while we're waiting for FinCom, maybe Dale's turn? Town Coordinator report?
Okay. It's all weather-related. The, it was notified today by MassDOT, and I've sent it on to Jimmy, that Plington's share of the $30 million that they appropriated for emergency funding is 27, 25,700 and some small change. So, we've got to sign the contract and get that in. That'll certainly be a help. That's at least $25,000 off of the deficit. It's for use for potholes and basically storm...
So, that's the expectation, it'll be used for potholes and the like?
Yeah, they specify what it can be used for, but essentially, it's backed up for stuff that happened as a result of the storm, you know, as a result of the storms, quote-unquote.
So, it's not for past spending, it's...
It has to be used by June 30th of this year. It's the current, it's money for current fiscal year. And...
So, I did, I talked to Jimmy, and I think that we're probably, without any more snowstorm, we only got sand for one more snowstorm, so if we have no more snow, Barbara in the projection had put in a $200,000 deficit, and that, that's probably going to be the number.
25,000 will help.
Yeah, but it's, if that, if that's for future spending as opposed to what we've already spent, that, that's why I was asking that question.
No, it can be used against, it's used against this current fiscal year's expenses. You know, so, I mean, if we're running a deficit, we would reduce the deficit by that, that number.
We're still hoping that FEMA's going to come through on our side for some of that.
The weather forecast at least isn't bad for the next week. The other, the other thing is, you know, we had the ice dams and the roof leaks in the treasurer's office. The insurance company came in, they sent RebuildX, they're from Carver, but they're pretty much a statewide organization. They came in, attempted to dry it out and check it out, but it really didn't help the problem. So, tomorrow, ServiceMaster is coming in, they're bringing ServiceMaster in to actually do the determination on what the problem is and where the, where the water might be lurking, because it's very, still very mildewy. And Mike Rodriguez, our IT guy, will be here also tomorrow. We're going to move the treasurer's office into the old selectmen's meeting room until we get that room right. So, they'll be running cables over, and the phones will go over, and you should, and it will work out all right. It might be an inconvenience for some meetings that are happening in that room, but we've got to get people out of there because it's not, I mean, it's, it's musty, very musty, very moldy, and it's not, not a good environment. So, that's all going to happen tomorrow, and after tomorrow, we'll find out what, what's involved in that.
So, we're figuring this is going to be a reserve transfer to pay for this?
Well, so far, it'll be insurance. I mean, it'll be insurance as far as, until the insurance company doesn't want to pay anymore, but I don't think, I don't, I think it'll pretty much be all covered with insurance, minus the deductible, which we should have enough money to cover the deductible in our PNC, in our line item for PNC. It's just more the inconvenience, but it's, it didn't, it didn't sort itself out last week. They came in last week and put the barriers up in the room and did the, you know, tried to dry it out and get it down, and put all the fancy sprays that they put down, and it didn't, it didn't get, it didn't do the trick, so there's water lurking somewhere in there. And so, we're going to move everybody temporarily across the hall.
Okay, Mike, just a, Mike Anton, 70th Street. I just had a question on the 30 million, the, on the road repairs. The article that I read said that that was just to help towns and cities with the potholes. It wasn't going to be used to supplement deficits or anything like that. That was, that was set for now, so is that, is that the...
Yeah, it's primarily for that, but it's...
No, because you went back and said to help with the deficit, but I, I don't think that that's what it was allotted for.
That's what I, that's what I thought, too.
Because the city of Boston got like 2.5 million, they got the majority of it, Worcester got 680 million, so 680,000, so...
Well, I mean, in terms of a higher...
I mean, they were giving you a line limit to use it by June, so, right?
Has to be used by June 30th.
Yeah, so I, I don't think it's for deficit use, I think it's to help the...
I think we have $25,000 worth of potholes and frosties.
On Maple Street.
Yes, I agree, that's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
We'll confirm that. Good.
But, at the end of the day, it keeps the deficit down by $25,700, because all of that stuff's going to have to be... seven hundred dollars because all of that stuff's gonna have to be fixed this year. Actually, the roads have been pretty good. Plumton's taken really good care of its roads this year, I mean, as far as plowing and, but now they're just opening up. And midweek, we're gonna get some light rain and some warm weather and that's when things will really open up where there's a problem.
Just take a little ride over Ring Road.
The, the east end of Maple Street is, okay?
And that would be it, that's what I'm working on now. I, the only thing I did wanna say is I will have a full draft version of the warrant with these, warrant for you at your next meeting. I'll email it to you before the meeting, but, with all the articles on it. So if you wanna begin to take your votes on what articles you want or support on this, on this warrant, I'll have that.
So, and warrant closes next Monday, does it, on?
And the warrant closes on next Monday. I'll send out another reminder, but I haven't got any. The, the special town meeting warrant is still open, but I have no articles, believe it or not, for that yet. I'm assuming will be some as we get closer to the end of, you know, as we get closer to the town meeting time, but I have none at this point for it.
Are the assessors, their articles go on annual?
Yeah. Yeah, their, their audits and, yeah, all of their articles go on the annual.
Well, you wanna do Carisland?
Did Chris Marano see you about an article?
Yeah, I have that one, that one's on there as well.
This is from Old Colony Planning. They have a, a transportation improvement program which could help with highway bridge and transit projects. And this also did go to the highway department, so it's something we can access, I'm sure Jim will be on top of that. These are the, they're February twenty-fifth meeting. This is a notice of filing of ongoing litigation. This is a notice of private well sampling. We got the notice last time that they were going to be doing it, these are the results. Basically, it's well within the Massachusetts drinking water standard for two-fifty-nine Main Street and it's good to go. Comcast newsletter and the Plumton Halifax Express. And that's it for Chris Marano.
Okay, well, while we're at it, next meeting dates, we're feeling like for the moment, Board of Selectmen will be meeting each Monday. Next Monday night, we'll be meeting, we'll have an executive session at five-thirty. We have a document coming in for us to study and review amongst ourselves. April sixth, we'll have an executive session. Both of these are for ongoing litigation and we'll have town council joining us at five P M. So Board of Selectmen will start at five-thirty next week and at five P M the week after the open meeting will hopefully start at six P M. Just as a reminder, not, I don't have my notes. Is it next week or the week after? Well, we have South Shore Community Action Council coming in to give a presentation we talked about previously. Either that's next week or the week after.
That's next week.
Pardon?
Next week.
Okay.
And the week after that is Joyce.
Oh, is the Boston Kane.
What, what are these dates on here, March? Oh, those are minutes, where, where were you? Okay, I found them, sorry.
So why don't we, we have collected a few minutes because of, a few weeks' minutes because of vacations and the like, so maybe we can jump into that while we continue to wait for FinCom. This is the exciting part of the meeting. So why don't we go in chronological order, starting with the oldest, so that would be February twenty-third. You have a bunch of things, so I only had one, so why don't I add my...
Ninety percent of it is just punctuation or capitalization to make it easier to read for future generations.
Okay.
A little bit of...
All right, so the only thing I had, did you have anything on February twenty-third? The only thing I had on, and it's sort of punctuation, the very last line, that should read Silver Lake School Committee Revenue Subcommittee. So anything of substance there?
I, you, you had said, you expressed hope that town officials would refrain from using social media related to the town and I thought commenting on town business. Just, I mean, you can say it's, we're doing strawberry shortcake, but you mean legitimate business, not, or committee business. So, that's basically it. Is, is that the official name of the tri-town studio? Do they have an official name?
It, it varies a little. I, I think we understand it by that name for the time being, yes.
That's fine.
So we'll let you give that to Colleen, right? So you have the twenty, I mean, Kristen.
Is that supposed to be fiscal year fifteen or sixteen? I thought it was sixteen. Projections for sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yep, good catch. So February twenty-third will come from Colleen. Okay, next is March second. Looks like you have...
Again, it's a lot of nitpicky stuff. And then, under the South Shore Community Action Council, I added the phrase "to let residents know of their services."
That's good.
And then, that was just a note and we have invited them to a meeting.
And I, I just had two there, it's council, C I L.
Oh, C I L.
And same thing.
Here.
There. Okay.
And, again, little language usage, instead of had been called, he was called.
Okay.
And spelling that out because we don't mention it anyplace else.
Okay. Then the only, I had a couple things on cable access. Mr. Russo noted he had discussions with town council. You've got the studio, that sentence, the last sentence, I think should say, he also noted, he sat in on the Halifax Carver Board of Directors meeting. So, that one will be Colleen, too. Halifax Carver Studio Board of Directors meeting. She's your one on that, right? Okay. Oh, okay, so let's vote on, I make a motion accept the February twenty-third minutes as amended. All those in favor? I make a motion accept the March second, allow minutes as amended.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. So we're up to March fifth, executive session.
It's supposed to be the fifth.
This is supposed to be like that.
Yeah, sorry, that, that was a typo there. My only thing on this was the first bullet point is actually, I think, is not correct. Oh, forgive me, it is correct. I, I take it back. I, I, so I'm fine with these minutes if everyone else is. I make a motion accept the March fifth executive session meetings as written. All those in favor?
Second.
All right. And now we are up to March fifth, regular meeting, actually a working session. I had only one thing, this is Mr. Russo speaking as a private citizen. You had capitalizations. She's really got you on capitalizations.
Actually, two of these are Dale's.
Woo!
The worst ones are Dale's.
He's not here to defend himself.
Yeah, we gotta be careful, he won't take them unless next time.
I know.
The clerk will be taking them.
We appreciate, say on camera, everyone that takes minutes, we very much appreciate.
Little bit of wording change. Biggest need due to liability issues is the police department, but it's really a new police station. The department is not... Mr. Russo said... Okay, so Mr. Russo said one tricky piece is to have an idea of what the fire station alone will cost, or the fire station will cost. I said, Mr. Russo said it would be a good idea.
Yes.
No, it would be good to have an idea of what the station alone would cost.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So I make a motion that the March fifth working session meeting minutes be accepted as amended.
I, I have a question. Did you chat with the fire chief? Is that, is that one where...
The assessor came in? Yeah.
Yeah.
I have chatted with him, I let him know about the will of the board and he understands.
So she, she asked me today, that's why?
Yeah, she asked, I spoke to her later today. And I'll, I'll speak to both of them again, so they are coordinating.
Okay.
Actually, there was one other change there, it was just from the assessing department to the assessor's department.
So I, I don't remember.
Move to accept the minutes as...
As amended. Second motion, all those in favor? Okay, last one, March sixteenth, which was last week. So Mr. Henry was away, so this one's just you and I.
I didn't really have much.
Okay. I had the first bullet point, Dale went line by line, I think that would read better, Dale went over the Board of Selectmen budget requests line by line.
Okay, leave it on Dale's.
Okay.
I had Mr. Dale.
Okay. So, we'll just say Dale?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, it was basically, it was basically tabled until town meeting, or, or is that not true? That was my feeling.
No decision was made, I'm not sure.
How about no decision made? I'd be happy with that added in.
We know that FinCom has arrived and we will be with you momentarily. All right, I had the very last line, amended by state law and boards need to do a better job overall of fulfilling those mandates.
Good.
And then, last one was, town will stay unique and special and is for the citizens to be involved in special. Sorry. He believes in the time to stay unique and special is for citizens to be involved, yes, is for citizens to be involved.
Okay.
All right.
And then that one, I added a not, you said there had not been many articles, not that there had been many.
Good. All right, so I make a motion, the March sixteenth regular meeting minutes be accepted as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, and I have one of those questions.
Okay. And I will, I will get those to you tomorrow and Colleen will have the rest. Beautiful. So, we welcome the FinCom, we know they're working real hard, we know this is their difficult time of year. I think we had maybe three major areas that I'm aware of that we might wanna talk about tonight. One, your budget projections at this point. Two, the opportunity to discuss what's happening with the Silver Lake budget and with the Silver Lake Revenue Subcommittee meetings. And three, maybe an opportunity to talk a little bit about the municipal revenue growth factor issues that have, we discussed last week, that we got more information on. Does that sound right? Okay.
Do you want our drafts of...
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we just gave you is a, it says draft in orange because it's a total first run-through of budget. And what we kinda did was go through, put in the requests and then funded the things we have to fund. Anything beyond that, for the most part, is level funded, except they even include two percent for salary lines for everybody. And this is kinda where we decided to start from. I don't know if you wanna skim through it or is there any particular line Jeff questioned about? Again, this is, this is our first put-together budget service.
Right off the top, is ten-point-three percent what they're talking about for group help?
The board meeting is on April sixth, but I haven't heard anything yet.
John, I think at one of the meetings, the school committee meeting, we were at John Tuffy, who's on the board, I think he mentioned three percent.
Well, this is including extra people. And so the group help is assuming there's more people will be taking help. Far we get is that number. So it's not just an increase in the rate, it's an increase in the number of people.
Well, we're gonna love what we have now, people. I'll have that.
I think, I wanna say two, she had two additional people.
There's gonna be, I, I believe it's, there's possibly some retirements and when people retire, they don't leave the health plan and then is the IRP to replace them. I, I believe is where she gets that. But yes, we got that number from Barbara. I'll just point out, because it's gonna be glad, that there is a decrease on the council on aging line. We were asked, this is what the request was, plus a stipend for the director. However, I got the warrant article from Dale and that appears as a warrant article, so that, that has not been eliminated, it's simply the five-thousand-dollar stipend, which is at this point request, is a separate, is a warrant article.
Is that the way we want it?
That's how I got it, I don't know why.
They submitted it as an article. I mean, it could be incorporated as part of their budget, either way.
Does a new stipend have to be voted by people?
Well, it's, it has to be, it's not a real stipend, it's gonna be wages and she's gotta take it to the wage and personnel board and I told her that, I think, and she may have already done it.
Yeah, she did. The wage and personnel meant last week and they approved that.
So, I think that's why I said, it's a new position, a new funded position, it needs to be approved, town meeting.
I think it was six thousand dollars, right?
Five.
We pulled five.
So it's gonna be a salary though, not a stipend? It was called a stipend. It doesn't matter, just a change of wording.
Yeah, it's gotta be wages or...
Yeah, I guess wage and personnel, yes.
The line one-eighty-five, that's certification compensation, that's huge increases simply because she wasn't certified before and, you know, now will be presumably. The accountant expenses line two-oh-five is the addition of, per the Department of Revenue's recommendations and Barbara's request, three hours a week of support time for her to get someone else in there learning a little bit and that is the only additional staff that I think we recommended.
Yeah, and the bu, the rest, per budget in conjunction with the treasurer collectives budget, which was decreased, made for a very minimal increase in bottom line, I think, one-point-eight percent, including salary increases.
Not that it's a big deal, but on the selectmen's wages, that's six hundred dollars, what, what that's been is fifty dollars and five hundred went to jail.
Right.
So we won't drop this to 150 or...
In fact, I'm, I'm glad to drop it all, if, if there's, unless there, I, I think there was some reason last year that we felt we each had to take 50.
We, we gotta take 50, because you, you gotta tell everybody that you had a daughter a week and two weeks on paid vacation.
And Wednesday vacation, just... I'm more than glad to take this.
And it's not, it's not worth a lot, but you, you could, uh...
Well, the request was 500, and we cut it to 600, so we didn't, we didn't want to go too much farther, so...
Well, cut it to 150.
Or are you okay with that?
Yeah, sure. I'm paying the town to do this, aren't I?
It doesn't even cover your gas.
Fine, I give you money.
So, was the town clerk's request for more hours, um, uh...
Which, um, yes.
For her? Yes, it was more hours for her and for her first...
And that's included in this, or not?
Not the recommended.
Okay.
If you see this, the last two columns, the recommended and the two before that, the requested, so you can see the, with the amount and the percentage...
Yep.
That was requested, and that won't be recommended.
Um, the next one with any increase bigger than a 2% would be line 550, the police chief's salary, which is skyrocketing, but it's contractual, we have no control over that number.
Kind of $36,000 in the last few years.
The motor vehicle line, under police?
Um, it's because the car, the, the lease payment, one of the cycles, like 412 or something, so it's, it's one of the, the second lease payment, yeah.
Yeah, two vehicles on the warrant last year, what, they moved to here, and one vehicle goes back on the warrant.
This is only one, there's only one going here.
Well, I think two, two new vehicles came, one came on the year, and one went on the warrant. Because it's $1,100, $11,000 on the warrant also.
The next big increases are special ed and vocational ed, all those numbers, we don't have any. The regional school assessment, they have not voted a budget, so that's, that's the latest budget they've presented, the most recent budget they've presented, and we're gonna talk about that after the, the May vote comparison more.
Why, why have you recommended that?
Well, we just needed to stick a number in...
Why wouldn't you just level fund it, like, yeah?
Well, because it's, I think it's unlikely that the other towns are gonna do that, and we're gonna be caring, we're not gonna have enough, we want the budget there enough, yeah. We can, again, they haven't voted a budget, we can keep working on it, but in terms of just trying, this is a, see where we come out thing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's obviously some places we'd like to add one bit more to.
They're supposed to vote the budget this Thursday, I think.
They are supposed to vote the budget this Thursday. But they can take additional votes. So this comes through a total increase of just 6.9% from the last year? Then we also, we also gave you a copy of Barbara's, the, the only revenue projection we have so far. But then we also gave you, uh, what we know of for warrant articles till now. Dale, I took what you used.
Yeah, you have, you have all of what I have so far. I don't have any special warrant articles, but that's surely not already right now.
So are we all, i- i- is this list what we, that they just gave us, are the things that we're aware of?
Yeah, those were all, yeah, those were all, um, those are all articles, all article requests that I have as well. They're, it's the same, same list.
I haven't run this by Barbara, she...
There's nothing new.
The selectmen are not aware of other ones?
Just in that police sick leave buyback, um, that amount that's in there, it would be added to the amount we put aside last year, would be enough to pay that one sick leave benefit.
It's, it's, I think it took a little bit more than that, but we've got other people, it's, it's like a couple of, I think it's, his payout is gonna be like 18.
Okay. I think the chief, the chief gave us this number.
The chief gave us that, but we can, uh, if it needs to be adjusted.
We can, yeah.
Well, we, we, we gotta somehow, both with that and the OPEB, we've gotta start trying to, uh, get ahead of it.
That's what, the other thing that I want to mention that was that, that 6,000 will be, everything we put aside will be spent, if that's all we put aside, so we, you know, the, the idea is to start saving something, and that should maybe be raised up a little bit. And now something too, just sort of off track a little bit, but with SED, that we were saying that maybe it's time to start considering making some kind of a revolving fund, a special account with SED, where all that money that came back last year that we used could have gone into an account to cover this, this bigger increase this year, to try and level things out a little bit, to put some money aside that either...
A lot of towns have a stabilization account specifically for SED.
And that might be something, you know, because these ups and downs are killing us.
So what do we need to do there, just create a stabiliz, a SED stabilization fund?
Yeah, but, but you, you, you run into a situation that you still have to fund it.
Well, understood, but at least if we set it up, this may well not be the year to try to fund it.
But it might be a good use for the money coming back from Pembroke. You'd have to, John.
You'd have to vote, move it over, move it out of the discussion.
But yeah, that might be something to think about. And even if, it means getting it voted and putting $1,000 in it this year, just to get it funded, to get it started, and not putting money in it any year unless money comes back from SED.
Well, you, the other thing that, that you can, I think that we have to consider, is using regular stabilization for SED.
Using the regular stabilization money for SED?
Well, we're hoping to make the budget work, we're hoping to do that.
No, but I mean, it's, if you had a separate one, or if it's all in the general fund, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, it does, because the regular stabilization, what we're trying to do, and what's happening under the capital purposes fund, is it's, we're trying to slowly bring it up to 10%, which is where it's supposed to be, and then it will stay there. And if you start putting money in and out, I think it's better just to let it stay at the 10% that it's supposed to be, and set up a separate account that, because if there's nothing in it, you don't want to start drawing the, you know, what if, you start taking money out of it, out of it, you start trend wherever you're taking money out of stabilization funds.
And then the, and then one year where a bunch of money comes back from SED, and that's already at its cap. If, if it gets to its cap, and then two years from now, $40,000 comes back from SED, that would be at its cap. I think it would be better to have us, if we're gonna do this, to have it's our own, its own accounts that feeds itself.
You gotta learn from what the school committee did, when you think you've got money coming in that's gonna replenish your stabilization account, then you spend out of it, all right? You guys didn't earn that through this, these last couple of months?
So is there any reason not to set up a SED stabilization account?
Just money.
But I mean, we could set it up and not fund it this year, right? At least it's set up?
It's just a warrant article, that's all it is?
That's all we, that's all we did for the setting up this one here. To the OPEB one? Yeah. Yeah, the OPEB one was just, was just a vote at town meeting, and it would pretty much be similar. I mean, I can look around and see what the towns would have and what they've done, but I don't think it's a home rule petition. I think it's just a matter of creating the account. In fact, I'm not even sure it requires a town meeting article other than to fund it, to create it, I don't believe you do. I mean, if everyone decided you want it, you could create it on your own, it's just an accounting function, but, uh, to put money in or take money out, obviously, it would be, but it would have to be, it would, it's easier if you put it under a mass general law, because then that requires the two-thirds in, two-thirds out, and there's all that stuff, so, yeah, an article, I mean, uh...
Can you, can you explore that this week, as to whether we need...
Yeah, sure, you don't have to put anything in it if you don't have anything to put in it, just created, we didn't put anything in the OPEB account last year, it still doesn't have anything in it, but...
Right.
Okay, so you'll explore that, if we need a warrant article, we can have that by next week?
Sure.
Do you want to close it?
It might be good, it might be a good thing to have it as a warrant article anyway, so that people know what we're trying to do, so that there's an understanding of the ups and downs we're facing with this account, you know, that might be a good thing to just bring to town meeting either way.
I, I think anything that brings attention to the awareness of the problem and the unfunded mandate, and actually, I remind my colleagues up here, I think we got a email this afternoon from Lieutenant Governor, with a questionnaire, and one of the things she was particularly questioning was the unfunded mandates, which I think she's taken on as a, as a project, and probably be worth all three of us mentioning, what a budget disruptor, um, the variations from year to year in SED is. Okay.
Have you heard anything about FEMA money coming for the storm cost? No.
I heard, I did, yeah, there was, uh, there was something on the Department of Revenue's, actually, I think it was in city and town, and it said that there would be a bulletin forthcoming, um, on, on FEMA, so it was, it was very positive, so I think within a week or so, we should expect to hear from FEMA.
We did get Dale. The highway surveyor, I spoke to him about that, he's aware that the FEMA money's available, and he's in the process of applying, or as much as he can apply for it now, not applying for a specific amount, but basically just getting in line with everybody else.
Yeah.
But the other, the state money, we got 27,000 or something for... 25,700 for...
Potholes?
Potholes and guardrails, and all the stuff that got damaged in this year's winter.
Must be 27,000 potholes.
They probably get a dollar a pothole, they might make it.
Look where you look.
So we, do we have a sense on fully recognizing this is a first run-through?
Okay, well...
And fully recognizing the revenue estimates are just that, do we have any sense of where this budget would put us?
Well, so what we, again, it's just, we did it really fast just now, if we look at the, the bottom line number that's in this budget right now, we add in the warrant articles here, presuming we're gonna fund them all, which we don't, you know, they're not, we don't necessarily have to do, or we may not choose to do. Those two numbers come to about 300,000, I think? Oh, yes. Right, and assuming, sorry, thank you, if we fund about, well, $300,000 out of the capital purposes fund, we use that towards capital articles, assuming we can, actually, some of them we can't, so we'd have to, we'd have to figure that out, just using that number.
Yeah.
Then we would come in about $290,000 under our revenue estimate. The issue is that the, the total revenue estimate we have is associated with a little more than a 7% tax increase, and I guess what we're hoping is to come in under that and go to town meeting, and with the understanding that, tell the voters, there is more space to raise revenue available, but as you do that, your taxes are gonna go up, you know, more than whatever number we come in at.
Well, her revenue projection has just got 2.5%.
No.
That's the whole thing?
Right, 10 million is the whole thing.
It's the whole thing.
Where did she add the other, uh...
It's always in the levy base, the 2.5% goes into the levy base automatically.
Oh, okay.
Every year.
Yeah.
So we, we think in like under like, like five, maybe?
We're, we're at five-ish, we think, we know, yeah, we're ballparking.
There are a lot.
Which is a lot. And if, and if anyone wants to get on FinCom.
All right, I'll, I'll just make a little plea, fully recognizing it's the first step through this. Town clerk was in last week, I think after you guys, and made a pretty strong case for the amount of work they're needing to do, and not enough hours in the day. Obviously, we have to tighten up to try to keep things under control. If by chance, anything went well here, and we felt like there was a little more room, I think she made a pretty good case that, that they do need more hours. But I fully recognize that we are challenged, and a 7% tax increase is not gonna be looked upon, um, with great glee, I suspect.
Sir, was any more time added to their budget at all?
To who?
The town clerk.
Not, this, not, this, not the, the, the only addition was three hours to the town meeting for, for help. Not four.
So what's next in the process for you?
Well, go back through again, and we're gonna check out Barbara and review, we have some questions for her, and, um, you know, see if there's any updates to the revenue projections.
Maybe, only because as much as you want to be kept up to date, so do all the departments, that maybe this initial feeling that it's looking like level funding, um, should be told to me.
Well, maybe we should send a memo, send a memo, I think, because it's...
You know, um, departments have been really good, you know, there are definitely some departments that have needs that we would like to meet, but for the most part, I'd say that, um, that most of the departments came in trying to be as close to their budgets last year as they could.
And working with us.
And working with us, letting us know where there was a way to go.
The, the other towns, and I guess maybe it's moving to one of the other subjects, but the, the other towns you think are going to approve a, a pretty substantial increase to Silver Lake? Are they talking that way, or...
Well, Halifax is gonna have a slight decrease, so they're kind of, you know, they're kind of... Neutral, but, and it's Halifax, it's plumped in Kingsham with the increases, and I, I can't say, I don't know. I, I don't think they're gonna entertain making huge cuts. But it does segue into that next conversation, because I'm not sure this is the only part, this is all the money Silver Lake is looking for, so that's the next, uh, part of the discussion.
Did it segue, or not?
We'll head to the chair.
Yeah, let's segue to, um, what we know, what we, what we know about Silver Lake, um, school committees' actions. They meet Thursday night, my understanding is that they're gonna vote their budget Thursday night. And that it'll probably be a 2.5% increase if they take out the capital projects, and that we will end up with an 11% increase because of the assessment, if that's what happens.
But the, in the, in the memo that, that you sent around, right, it looked to me like they were able to reduce the budget, but then they, they've got a huge number for capital additions for FY16, is, did I read that right?
What, what I think, and I, I hesitate to explain it, because it's, after like 14 hours of meetings, I'm not sure I understand exactly what's going on, seriously, it probably is that many hours, it's been long hours. I believe that they want to do, and I just want to say upfront, I am not speaking for the Silver Lake committee, this is the best I can do, they have a large snow and ice deficit, and if no, well, assuming there's no FEMA money forthcoming, what they would like to do is put an article on this special town meeting warrant... what they would like to do is put an article on this special town meeting warrant to fund that out of E and D. So, and their deficit is, I think, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we've asked for an accounting of that. And then in addition to that, what they would like to do is put a sum of money, they wanna add a line to their budget called capital improvement, so capital spending, and add a sum of money to that for the fiscal sixteen budget. The money that's, so, there's the money from Pembroke that right now is in undesignated receipt. It will flow into E and D, the excess and deficiency fund. And June thirtieth, anything in excess of five percent of their budget, which they have about a hundred thousand dollars in space now, and plus if they spend the money for snow and ice, that amount will be subtracted, I guess is the word, from the Pembroke money. The rest of that will come back to the towns in the fall in the form of reduced assessments. So if we voted to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the budget and we get ten thousand dollars back, we'll have ten thousand dollars that could be spent at a special town meeting on something else. I believe that's what they're proposing to do. And they're asking, I think, to have some guidance from the towns as to what sum of money we would support in additions to their budget and capital items. The concern I have?
Which would, which would come out of this Pembroke give?
Well, it would come out of, yeah, but ultimately.
Ultimately.
Show game. At the same time, what they presented is a five-year capital improvement plan that probably has one point eight million dollars in it over five years. And I think the thought being that it would be up to the towns to be sane enough from their perspective to save the money that comes in as a reduced assessment to fund that stuff. And of course, the towns are equally gonna wanna be using the money on our own capital needs. So therein lies the problem, that even if we get it back, they have the expectation that they're gonna have a whole bunch of capital needs.
But I think that it was a lot of discussion at that meeting that that would not be the case. That you're, in the, if they're saying they might have, I'm gonna use a number, three hundred thousand dollars, that's not their number, I'm just using a number, in annual capital expenses. And what was, some people said to them is, well, then you're gonna have to shrink your budget that much. You know, this one year, maybe there's a little extra from this reimbursement. After that, no, that money's gonna go other places in town. And I think that, I think that was stated clearly. I don't know that.
Well, was it heard clearly?
You'd have to ask them.
But the fact of the matter is that that's up to us. Whether they heard it or not, when they come in next year with an additional three hundred thousand dollars in the budget in seventeen, if we can't fund that, then that has to go back to the drawing board.
And look, I think that's the crux of the problem, is, you know, that middle piece. And it's just, I, it couldn't have been stated more clearly at the revenue subcommittee meetings that we've attended. I only got in about eight hours to your fourteen hours. The towns have made absolutely clear it is unsustainable to keep growing more than two point five percent. And honestly, it felt to me like they were saying, fine, we could stay within the two point five percent and we're gonna add three hundred thousand capital expenses every year, which.
I think some of their capital needs are real and I don't wanna, you know, they need to address the buildings. They're ten years old and, you know, certainly better to do some work now than have catastrophes down the road. That's, it's simply, you know, to get a balanced revenue.
Can you, I remember hearing that there's a hundred and thirty thousand plus from solar. Where does that go in their budget? That would go to E and D, or would that?
No, they showed that in that revenue that you sent around.
Yeah, they were told it has to go, where was it? Heck, yeah, I have to pull it up.
But they're recognizing it as revenue. Maybe it goes as a reduction of utilities or something, but on that chart.
It couldn't be used as a utility offset. It has to be used, I think that's what they said.
Goes into the general fund.
It has to go, come in as a revenue.
Because I thought at some point, maybe when they were in meeting with you, they said something about that offsetting their snow deficit. Did I just totally mishear that?
No, no, I heard.
I think it was when they were with us, because they said, that's why I thought it went to E and D, because I thought that money would go into E and D and.
Well, maybe it does for this year because maybe it would. Yeah. I mean, it's very, I don't, I don't understand all that.
And then the capital monies that they're talking about for every year, is that the account that we agreed to and the other towns did not? The warrant, the warrant article, was they funding that?
They're just talking about having a line in their budget, in their annual budget of capital needs.
Okay.
They are hoping another town will vote that stabilization.
Which of course makes total sense to have a line of capital needs in there so that budgets don't get balanced on the basis of delayed maintenance, which is the road to hell. It's just, and I'm totally in favor of having that line and being clear that money has to be spent every year on maintenance. It's just balancing it with.
But you gotta, you gotta fund that.
Well, you have to fund it and you have to watch the operating costs and have enough money to fund it. And I think that's the, I think therein lies the tension that's been going on for all these weeks and still hasn't been resolved.
Well, one of my concerns is that they, the first version to the second version of the budget, they did reduce the budget and they reduced it, and I don't know the percent, but some significant amount of money by putting those items in their capital plan. And so if, that's, that's not, and some of those items are clearly capital items. They need a truck to plow or something. I mean, that's clearly, but some of it, a large part of it is technology, which was presented as year one of a five-year plan. Putting that into a category sort of outside your regular budgeting means you have to, I mean, how, what happens in year two of that plan? So that's, that's another concern. And I understand they're trying to, you know, they have a lot of needs and they're trying to figure out how to do it. I mean, they're trying to educate children. That's a good thing. But it's, unfortunately, we don't have the revenue to support it.
Can I just ask, you know, before that whole special town meeting came up, excuse me, about the monies, was there, was there a plan in place already for all these maintenance things? And, or are they doing it now because everything got voted down? Like, was there a plan, I don't remember this being talked about last year, that's why I'm just asking, like, there was no? Was there a capital plan last year or is there one now because the money came back from Pembroke? And the voters voted on it and now they're throwing it in because to me, to me, it doesn't make sense to, they kept doing the same thing over and over every year. Now it's not working. And now this money came in and people said, no, 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 we're not using that money for that. And now they're saying, all right, well, we gotta put a capital plan together and.
Well, we have been asking them for a capital plan.
But I, but I mean, are they, were they more pressured to do it now because of that?
Well, I think as with any department, when you see there's some money, Cisco money, you tend to say.
That's not what I mean, but like they, like, how, I mean, the school's ten years old, so were they, were they just waiting for this money? Or like, did they already have, is there money already there?
No.
There's no money there at all?
No.
So.
They got the windfall. And they, you can actually look and see how they, how they planned what year it was gonna come in. You know, when the settlement was signed, I mean, there was a whole bunch of pre-planned. And then I almost think they thought they were gonna spend that money and we wouldn't realize it.
Well, that's what I'm asking, kind of.
Well, I don't think they ever thought we wouldn't realize that. They might have hoped that they were, would have been able to spend that money. But I don't think that they ever thought towns would realize they were doing it.
Right, and some of those items that were on there, if I remember, there was, you know, security cameras, things like that, which I agree that the schools need those. But, and I could be wrong, wasn't, isn't there federal monies for that after all the issues have been going on in the country with the schools? Like, the middle school needed the locks on the doors. Does that, can't that get funded by the federal government? Because shouldn't that be locked anyways? Or, you know, then there was another one for seventy-five new lockers. Is there seventy-five new students coming in?
No, but I have to say, my kids now, out of school four or five years, and the seniors do not, you all get lockers.
Okay, because they know, because nobody ever said what's going on with the lockers. They just said, we need seventy-five new ones. So there's kids that don't have lockers.
There have been kids every year that don't get lockers. I do, I only know that personally.
No, I was just asking, you don't need to.
And yet, and some of the seniors are perfectly fine with that. They don't even want a locker.
I never used my locker in high school.
Right. But right now, there are not enough lockers for all the kids in the school.
You know, the solar thing, doesn't that get, can't, doesn't it just do that for free? Like, they assess it for free? Because they want your business or?
No, they're getting revenue.
No, no, when they, when they wanna see if they can put the panels, wasn't that on there too? They wanna?
No, no, they, they get revenue from it.
No, no, this was as part of, you know, they're doing the building look and then they add to that to see if it, solar could be put on the top of the building.
I'm just trying to remember from the.
Well, I mean, there was a debate in there and one guy was saying, you can get that done for nothing. You know, they'll just throw that in. And then somebody else, you know, another member that happens to be in Plumpton said, well, no, let's put, add some money there just in case, so. You're right, I mean.
I have a feeling that God, he didn't pay anything for it, so, you know, I don't, I don't.
Well, that's definitely, I mean, again, I don't think Silver Lake, it's very extreme because they've got this big amount of money, that we're seeing it so clearly. But I think any department, when they see there's gonna be extra money, they all of a sudden say, I've been doing without all these things all this time. We need to do this. We need to have two police officers on every shift. Yep, we do, but every year we push that off because we couldn't do it. So I think it's glaring is what it is because it's so obvious. But I don't think that it's being done bad intense. I think their intention is to do the things the school wants to do and needs to get done. However, we can't financially afford to do everything that needs to be done in any departments.
Sir?
A bunch of our budget problems are due to the Cisco issue two years back. I mean, well, if I understand correctly, we absorbed a lot in our budget based on income that we really didn't have. And what was that number back then? And is it correlated in our budget problems? And can't you reset the clock?
See, I don't.
Seeing that fifty-nine, twenty-one D would allow you to.
We're still netting.
Underwrite.
We're still netting. After we put the money in stabilization, we're still getting a million dollars from Cisco. And the issue is that we've got a hundred and seventy-small thousand sped increases. Silver Lake's got, you know, whatever, they've got another two hundred thousand. I mean, that, that's the issue. We've now, down to the million dollars we get from Cisco, we spent it all.
We're not just.
There's no more. You know, it's like that Baker says, it's a spending problem.
Seems to me that Mr. Calderon, the, this, last three cuts, and this poor woman tells me, they talked about unfunded mandates on here. I know when we saw the new gun permit issues come in, no money came of that. I now see four people where I used to see one person at transfer station. But we have, when does this all end? When do you begin looking beyond, how do I make this work? How do we do something different? Throw the tea into the, when are we gonna do that? Because we have the same discussion every year. Why I don't go to town meeting because there isn't anything offered other than it's gonna cost you more to educate your kids. Well, I don't happen to believe that. And never have I heard the number, it's a surprise to hear the number two and a half is an increase in the school budget. That's a first for me and perhaps it's happened before, but it's a first. So when do you have that discussion? When do you try to find a way to put the brakes on this whole thing?
I think it's important to realize that the money from Cisco, I mean, if you just look at, the school budgets have increased, you know, but if you look at fire department from fiscal year two twelve, went from a budget of a hundred and ninety-three thousand up to this year, they're looking for five hundred and eleven.
Yeah, but how much of that was because of Cisco?
That's what I'm saying. This is where the Cisco money has gone. It's going to everybody's operating budgets. They grew substantially over the last few years. And now they're in a place where they need to just be maintained. We can't afford to go any higher.
But one doesn't have to look much farther than special ed, vocational ed. In four years, we went up on special ed six hundred thousand dollars. On vocational ed, we went up two hundred thousand dollars. There's eight hundred thousand dollars in four years. So where did the Cisco money go? In large part, right there. And, you know, as worthy as those things are, they are the unfunded mandates that have been such a problem. They probably just aren't sustainable.
I left office and special ed was a hundred and eighty thousand and we thought it was outrageous.
And now special ed and voc ed are one point four million. It's out of a nine point five million dollar budget. It's probably thirteen or fourteen percent.
Why are we beating ourselves up to come up with that?
What's that?
Why do we beat ourselves up? There has to be someplace else to go collectively with this issue.
Well, there is legislation and I think Mr. Calderon's been in.
Calderon has introduced legislation, this is the third year, to try to fix that. But it hasn't gone. He can't, he's not getting the support from anybody else or very few other people. You know, I think that, you know, we had, I guess, there was something I was looking at and I think the state average is where we have the same amount. We have like the state average of number of kids and expenses in there. The problem is, it's such a huge piece of our budget. The school, the schools, and I, you know, I haven't calculated it, but schools generally, all in, if you take the health insurance out of the general, the added and stuff like that, are close to eighty percent of our budget. You know, now the ambulance, I mean, the reason for the fire department's big increase is doing the ambulance ourselves. And I don't think it's sustainable. You know, it's nice and, you know, we've got a good service, but I don't know how we can continue that.
No, and the fire chief came in originally indicating that he needs more people and we said, you know, there, the reality is, and the way I look at the Cisco thing is, you know, we were here and then Cisco came and we got to here. And it doesn't really matter where there was we were gonna spend it all. And now we're back to two and a half percent in new growth. And, and that's, you know, I don't, whatever the Cisco number was, that was gonna happen, I think. And, and we can't, we're not gonna be able to add without an override, a bunch of staff to the fire department. So if he's gonna need that, we did talk to him about it. We didn't get an answer. If you're saying that you can barely operate it now, you know, you can just barely staff it now, what are you gonna do in three years? And we, I think as a town, need to look at what that means because.
What other options there are as well.
Options or how, you know, if you're gonna, you wanna keep it, how are you gonna fund it? Because you're not gonna be able to fund it through the regular budget.
Well, sadly, what's gonna happen, you know, is it's gonna go to town meeting. And just like when we got a full time chief, somebody's gonna go up, get up and say, oh my God, I mean, nobody's up there. We get John Wachka when somebody new to the town said, you mean, there's nobody up in that building? All in favor and that was the end of it. So unless there's a plan in place, that's what's gonna happen, sir. Is you're gonna get voted into higher taxes and unsustainable taxes for some of us anyway.
Well, there's a cap. There is a cap, so.
Yeah, you sit here trying to fit everything into the box and rather than, look at the box. If you're telling me we went from what, two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand in the fire arena? Is that, is that Cisco related? No.
Cisco funded it.
Yeah. But Cisco didn't.
Want it.
By being here, we didn't need to provide three hundred thousand dollars more services, did we? Or be prepared to fight a fire that would require equipment and every other damn thing to, no.
So what happened?
So we had, we had money dangling in front of us and somebody said, let's do this. It was trouble me trying to keep the lid on the joint for a few years, myself and others. You know, I wonder where dispatch went. You know, we had an arrangement with the state police and that blew up. Never heard. Never heard why that blew up. Cost us nothing for a lot of years. We had shared ambulance for a lot of years. That apparently is blown up. We're a small town. I deal with this all day long. Marilyn, you've dealt with small towns. We'd do better if we were out there somewhere. Because Franklin County and those places are talking about sharing, building inspectors, sharing wiring inspectors, sharing planning, uh, boards and sharing planners and sharing all these other functions. And we're sitting here, a small community with, with little prospect of bringing in that kind of revenue other than squeezing it out of the limited number of people that are here some, for some long time to come. That we, we gotta get back into a mode where we're searching for alternatives that fit the mold here. And as I say, we'd do better west of the Connecticut if we were out there. And, um, you know, when I hear that we're talking about building a facility.
Near the Halifax skyline.
You know, yeah, they said no, but under what terms would you accept a common fire and, and, uh, an ambulance? I, I think we have to do that. Cause we'll get nickel dime in the town meeting because, you know, if you single focus on somebody getting up and say, people are gonna die, you know, if we don't do this. And I, I don't know what those statistics are, what it costs us. When I moved here and others moved here, it was scoop and run. Okay, that's what, the police picked them up for the most part and the cruiser when they went on. And I don't know how many we lost back then, but we've gotta get back to some reality reflective of, of the size community we are. And, and again, it, it lovely transfer station, but I see a lot of people. That was shut down after, well, do this or here comes the heavy club and cap it and bring in all this other stuff. It, it, we have to find a way to fight back. We're gonna be on the bottom of this pile. The future isn't bright, is it? Anybody see a light here at the end of the tunnel? Other than, other than raising taxes on, on everyone? I hate to sit here and, I, I don't wanna be perceived as throwing stones, but I think collectively the mindset has to somehow change. As I say, last week I moved from this woman talking about stuff that she has to do that, that seemingly unrelated, but mandated by the state. I moved over here to listen to the elementary school committee and then to the, to the regional school committee. And it's all the same, whoa, we have to do this, we have to do that.
I think you're right, Howard, but I, you know, I think there's no panacea here. It's gonna be a little piece of everything. And we have to be frugal to try to keep the tax rate down. We have to continue to look for new revenue. Um, I think you're exactly right on regionalization. Um, and that may be the key. We've done it in some small ways. You mentioned dispatch, but we ended up with a five-year agreement with Duxbury for free. And, and sort of an exponentially better system. So that one's worked out well.
But it's fifty thousand dollars, five years old, is it, as I understand it?
Well, I think that's not clear. And luckily, I think we have three and a half more years to see on that.
But it's some number.
Yeah, um, and you know, similarly with the, the cable studio, those are small things. But I, I think this board is aware that regionalization's a piece and that we are, you know, at least looking at it and keeping it on the radar screen.
I, I will just add this, that I go to Florida and it's a community of three hundred and eighty people. They pick up the garbage and rub it. The water tower sits out front and fresh water comes from there. And a mile down the street is an advanced life support ambulance. And the, the real estate tax is six hundred and eighty dollars a year. So it's gonna be something between eight or nine thousand if we're paying and six hundred. It's gotta be something that, that we're doing wrong.
Do we wanna move on to municipal revenue growth factor to get really into the interesting stuff?
I get, well, I, I just think, um, and by the way, while we've had these huge increases, actually the school budgets haven't been the biggest increases at all. Anyway, um, I think Silver Lake is gonna be looking to, I assume Marcus, you and I are gonna be attending the meeting on Thursday for some guidance. And I would just like to hear what everybody thinks. In terms of what we are, are gonna recommend to them, in terms of for this year, capital expenditures in addition to the, is part of their sixteen budget. Or we can move on to municipal growth factors.
Well, I, I think that you and I have talked about it once before. I, I went through it before the town meeting and stuff like that. And I actually think there's three or four hundred thousand that probably should be spent in sixteen. They're legitimate and will save money by spending that money now. And if, if it were up to me, that's what I would recommend. You know, I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Out of the Pembroke settlement.
Yeah. You know, spend it out of E and D and then.
And the rest of that is, they've stripped, to get to a two and a half percent increase, they've stripped out capital expenses out of the operating budget, right? So you're seeing three hundred thousand to cover that stuff.
Well, the big, I think the biggest piece of what they stripped out was the computers, right? And that's, that you can't, uh, continue with that anyway, cause that's just the first step. But you know, once they get into it, you've got four more years of that and we know we can't afford that.
I think they took out about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the budget. And, and so I think that it could be that if you give, that it's not gonna go to capital stuff, it's gonna go put that back in the budget. I, I don't know. That's not my call. Cause I think there are building issues that need to be addressed. Anyway, I encourage anyone to come to the meeting on Thursday.
Yeah. What time is it?
It starts at five at the high school.
Yeah. Were they hoping for some kind of warrant article that the three towns would sign on to?
No, they just wanna add it to the fiscal sixteen budget.
But did it come out of, out of E and D?
No, it was.
So you'd have to appropriate it, pull them out?
Yes.
And when the money come back off the fall?
I guess we would have reduced assessments, so we would have money.
The, the bottom line of that is that it will come out of the Pembroke settlement. There's gotta go through all these things.
Do we need to put it in two thousand and fifteen in order for it to be limited? You know, so that they don't expect the same thing every year? Well, I, I again say, you know, even if they increase their budget three hundred thousand dollars this year with that tentative assessments being reduced, they have to realize that next year, just because their budget increased this year, they can't increase on top of that next year. I mean, and I think the towns realize that. And whether the school committee's hearing that or not, I hope they are. But it doesn't matter if the towns can't support it next year anyway. You know, as long as the towns are together and, you know.
They're, they're, they're not hearing it. I mean, you, you want, you wanna defend them, but.
Yeah, well, for their own sake, you hope they're hearing it. Because if they think they can subs- continue with that amount of money every year, they're gonna have to cut classes. They're gonna have to cut programming, teachers, because the, the towns can't, just can't afford to sustain that.
What was the, the, the thing that, uh, John Creed said? What, sixty-eight percent of the teachers are, are getting, huh?
I think fifty percent.
Cause that was sixty-eight percent of the teachers are getting over six point one percent pay raises.
That may be with the step increases.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it is with step increases and steps and, and what's the other? Lanes and steps and cost of living and.
Yeah, but once they're done with, once they're done with the steps though, their raises are.
Yeah, but they, they add more steps.
No, they don't, no, they don't, no, they don't do that. They're very.
The, the last contract.
Once you attended in, the steps stopped.
Denit, the, the la- not this last contract, but the contract before that, they added steps.
Used to hold such a hard line on that, not adding.
When we were there, there weren't any.
I got the.
I don't think so.
We would be holding that, that for all next year. But it's, you give some of it back with your windfall from the, they can, they can put some more in next year.
The other question I have, and that's a question for Barbara, is the way they're proposing to do it would just to add it to the sixteen budget. I, I don't understand exactly how you do that because we, we have to balance the budget. So we have to show a revenue source to balance that. And I guess, can you use estimate, estimated credits on an assessment of the revenue source? I don't, I don't know how that all works.
See, I, I still think they would have to fund it out of E and D.
This year.
Next year.
And then it would be replenished, you know, once, uh, cash is certified.
So from fifteen, fund it out of E and D, out of the fifteen budgets, special town meeting? They have to adjust their budget during special town meeting?
That's what I meant, I didn't say it clearly. I don't, I don't believe that's their intent, but I, I, I don't know.
But I, I think they could spend it out of the E and D in the sixteen budget.
Then it won't get replenished. Right, then it, then it.
I, I don't know how the timing works on that.
June, June thirtieth, I think. Whatever, anything over five percent automatically comes back to the, the town. So if they spend it in sixteen, they spend two hundred thousand dollars out of E and D, there's no, the plan.
Which I don't think it's June thirtieth, I think it's when it's certified.
No, they, that's what they said, they said it was June thirty.
Oh, the following June thirtieth.
No, he said it would be certified June thirtieth.
It doesn't, it gets certified in October, November.
It takes a long time generally.
That's right, but, but it's as of June, the certification is as of June thirtieth. It takes a while to get that number certified, but you can't spend it in July.
Right.
So it has to.
But, but you're almost, uh, see, they, they, they signed this thing on July second, which I think was a bribe. They, they played around with fiscal years, you know, and at, at one point when I was going through all those numbers, I had it in my brain as to why it made sense for them to, to do that. And that's, and that's why they tried to do what they did. Spent, you know, added to FY fifteen, take it out of E and D.
The other thing they kept saying is that they wouldn't necessarily fill up E and D again. So I don't know if that's.
I think the only thing that gets refunded is what's in excess of five percent. I don't think, they can't say, we'll refund a little extra to you.
Cause I don't think that's a choice they have.
Okay, but the chairperson there just kept on saying that over and over again.
Okay, we have enough information for Thursday night?
I don't think we're giving. I don't think it's been decided. Three four hundred thousand dollars once.
All right, um, so now that we're warmed up, I don't, do you wanna present first on municipal revenue growth?
Somebody else talked to, Marilyn, did you talk to somebody about?
Um, I, well, yeah, I talked to Melinda Ordway about municipal revenue growth factor. And I also got a phone call from Brett Kingsley about it. The deadline was October the first to have filed, to have a waiver or an adjustment in the municipal revenue growth factor. It's, it, you're not gonna have that changed now, short of some special legislation. And the, one of the concerns, and I had mentioned this to, to folks in the committee, is that if you have a senator or a rep that you're dealing with about kinda get any special act passed and if they are, you know, also involved with another one of the communities in the region, they're gonna lose, we're gonna gain. So they may not be necessarily thrilled about the idea of doing anything about that. I think also from, we had some, some preliminary estimate on what that factor adjustment would be, had it gone through. And this, of course, was based on estimates. I mean, we now know what actual figures are, so they would have to be plugged in again. But based on estimates, you're not talking about a huge amount of money considering the circumstances that we're in now. And it would only be around thirty thousand dollars less for Silver Lake and approximately the same for the Denit would be what we would be benefiting from that. The, the Cisco new growth that caused this is in the calculation for three years. This is the second year and they, you know, and it goes down. And next year's, well, for sixteen, our municipal revenue growth factor is, I think it's six point oh four. Where this year it's eight point three eight, is it eight point three something? Anyway, it's eight point three. So next year it would be less. The year after that, you wouldn't see an impact from the Cisco growth. I just, this is some general information. So, um, that's kinda where we're at at the moment.
There's, um, I, I dug an, Mark loves it when I get into the minutia of this whole calcare time now that I've put my brain through it. And, yeah, I agree, you know, pretty much with what you said, but there, there is an estimate they're using that after the big increase for Cisco, they now have almost a twenty million dollar estimate for new growth. And I, how they got it, I don't know. I've gotta call in to Jared to try and figure out where, where that came from. Because even the six point oh four percent that you mentioned, that, that would, it would be a huge number to get that big. And it's the year we had thirty thousand in new, new growth. So there's just some bad number and I'm gonna, I, I did this, so I have to hand it out. You can, uh, deal with it what you want to, but. And I didn't, uh, make a whole bunch of copies, but you guys can. The first sheet here, there's, there's three copies. The first sheet, actually, there, there's nothing on the website that I can see with how they came up with the six point oh four.
It's not up yet.
Yeah, I assumed that it wasn't. I, I was able to back into it for what I, I was doing.
Where's the, where's the six point oh four? Is that on?
It's not on here.
It's not on that one, but I'll show you where it is on the second sheet. On this first sheet, it's just, it shows you how they calculate the, this MRGF. And this is the FY fifteen. And the issue is, they get the growth percentages over here and they take the average of the last three years, lowest three of last four years, maximum last three years, average of two smaller years, difference maximum minus two year average. And they, I can't see any rhyme or reason as to which one they use. The, on the, on, for fifteen, they used the lowest three of the last four years, four point one four. And I, I don't know why, but I've got some prior years where they used the average of the last three years.
I don't know if they changed the calculation, I, I honestly don't know.
But now we're the, so that's basically, this is just to show you the gyration that they, that they go.
And these are, these numbers, you know, are, are based on estimates too. So, you know, when you get actual numbers in there, that's, they differ, they, they're gonna change.
And that's what happened to us, um, for fourteen. When Cisco went in, the original estimate didn't have Cisco in it. And that's why we got the big, the hundred and six thousand dollar whack in June or July. Is because they did change. There was, there was a preliminary fourteen, which, which on the next sheet I've got down there, I showed you the preliminary fourteen and then the final fourteen. And if you go through those numbers, that's, that's how we got whacked with the Kingston thing. But go over to, um, sixteen, the furthest column to the right. That five hundred and eight million dollar number has almost twenty million in it that, as an estimate, when the actual was only thirty thousand. So that's, that's the question I get in for Jared. Now, if you go down, oh, just about the middle of the page, you see the six point oh four that Marilyn mentioned.
Sorry, where's that?
Yes, on this, the furthest right-hand column, about in the middle of the page, you see it's three million oh eighty-five oh four, and then under that is six point oh four percent. That's the, this growth factor, that I can't find the calculation for it yet. But that's really what is costing us all the money. The three oh eight oh is last year's number. And then they've got this estimate, six point oh four. That brings it up to the three two six six. And that's what we've got to contribute. And that's the hundred and some odd thousand that we're getting cut with. And it's all based on that six percent growth factor, which is not real. You know, literally, our new growth was thirty thousand dollars, not twenty million.
No, it was a hundred and seventy-six last year.
All right, well, even a hundred and seventy-six. That's, that's, that's the other thing.
Hundred and ninety-four, hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
The other thing too, is there's all kinds of different numbers that are used in these calculations. You know, for two years, they use a revenue estimate. So every, two years, they use the same one, which is, you know. If you want to, someday, if you want to spend three hours on this, this summary sheet is like, you know, I cut and pasted this. This, this shows you where we've been. We're, Susan, I think you went through a couple of these minutia things that I put Mark through. We used to be in a situation to where we were paying more than we're supposed to. Have you heard me say that? Like Duxbury, Duxbury pays way more than they should based on all these formulas. We were too. Now, because of these huge estimates, we're now in a deficit. We're not paying, we're paying less than we should be, so we get an extra forty-one thousand dollar charge.
Oh, you mean towards education?
So, I mean, I am going to follow up with Jared, and I'm probably going to find out if there's not a damn thing we can do about it. But it, that's, that's about a hundred thousand dollar factor. It might, well, no, it's not, it's not the hundred and seventy-two, because the hundred and seventy-two Silver Lake pays over the required amount, so that factors into it.
So you think the issue is that twenty million dollar thing?
Yeah, their estimates are way high, and I think because we had Cisco. Then they thought it was, we were going to consistently have that.
But didn't, forgive my ignorance, but didn't Marilyn hear that whatever the Cisco growth, however that influenced this, that that would only last for three years?
It's true, but it's just one, because it's one of the figures that go into this calculation.
If, if, look at this, that sheet, okay? And go down, see certified new growth. So you get a hundred and thirteen thousand, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. That was where Cisco began. And then the one million, one ninety-one is Cisco.
Okay.
All right? Now, now, look at these formulas they use, and you can see how long that number's going to... Average of the last three years, okay? So that's, that, it'll go away, all right?
Right.
Then the next one's lowest three of last four years.
So that's two years instead of one more year.
Right. And you keep going through these things and...
But what we've heard, or what I heard from Marilyn was that if we were going to attack that, the only way we could would be through special legislation.
At this time, at this point.
Yeah, at this point, there is a study committee, if I, I think I heard. They're studying this whole formula thing, aren't they? Have you heard that?
I don't know.
Seems to me, I've heard that there's some, you know, once again, they're going to, because the thing is, I don't know how long it's been in place, but it's, it's been bastardized. All, you know, now it's, doesn't even resemble the, what it started out to be.
So we need legislation to redress what we've been over assessed, or special legislation just to change it?
If your legislation would only affect what you were, what we were in currently, you're not going to get it retroactively.
That's what I thought.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, it's, it is what it is unless I can do something with that twenty million dollars.
So other than the twenty million, what, what can we do, should be doing? Is there anything we should be doing?
It's talk to, legis, you know, I mean, because this whole thing is out of control.
And does the Pembroke settlement come into this as a one-time revenue? That's been maybe around a little bit.
Yeah, it may affect something, it may affect minimum contributions. I mean, some, Marilyn can help try to understand it.
Well, it shouldn't. I mean, I think we have to really keep our eyes open on that because it's a court set, it's a court judgment, and it's a one-time revenue. And that should not in any way be built into Silver Lake's, you know, continual revenue.
Not Silver Lake, but what about even the town in terms of our, I guess we're not going to get that much as a revenue to the town?
I don't think it's going to be seen as a revenue, but decreasing in assessment.
So in terms of action, you are pursuing with Jared the twenty million?
There's these estimates that are way out of whack.
Okay. Okay.
And I've got twenty-five more sheets for you personally.
There, boy.
All right.
Unless you want.
We appreciate FinCon's time. Anything else you all would like to say?
I guess, I'd like to hear what, I mean, as we move towards, we'll pull back, you know, as we work on this some more, again, this is our first pass. But I guess I'd like to hear from your board what you're looking at in terms of balancing the space we have under the levy limit versus trying to fund needs that we have in the town. Or we can do that next time. I mean, it's, it's not going away, but...
So, I mean, the options are somewhat more services or somewhat more taxes?
Well, again, this is a preliminary budget, but with essentially level funding, we're still looking at, don't quote this number please, but, you know, a range of a five percent tax increase. We have the ability to go higher, or we can go lower, but then we're, you know, level funding is reduced service as it is, so... I just think it's something that we, we need to have some dialogue about.
But it has to be, if you're, if you're level funding, there can't be many exceptions to that.
Insurance and the schools.
Yeah, but Silver Lake, it's not an exception.
Again, the thing is that if we say, okay, we're going to put a level-funded budget in for Silver Lake, and it's not realistic that the other towns are going to do that, then we're going to end up having to take what the other two towns vote and cut someplace else, or raise taxes more.
We won't have balanced the budget.
Well, if you listen to what Kingston's FinCon was saying, they, they, they need the level funding from Silver Lake.
They're not, I don't believe that's their position at all.
No?
No. And again, we have the biggest increase, so if we were to level fund, that's a, that's a significant decrease in health benefits, and a decrease in Kingston. And I don't think anyone, at the cost of cutting programs, I'm not sure that you're going to generate support for that. I don't think you generate support for that in point two. But aside from Silver Lake, which is obviously something that's going to, we need to see what budget number they vote and before we can have a discussion, but... Feedback about the rest of it.
I thought Kingston was going to add a big whack. They don't.
They're getting, they're getting a big whack, but they can, they have quite a bit of new growth.
Yep, it's five hundred and sixty-eight thousand is Kingston's increase.
So do you think maybe you would be back with us in two or three weeks? Does that seem like a reasonable time to, for you to refine this and for us to better understand what our thoughts might be?
I mean, unless we get, I don't know where we go from here. Unless we get different numbers from Barbara, she has different input for us. Or unless you feel strongly about increasing certain budgets. I don't even know. I don't even know we go back to, I don't know what we, where we go from here.
Well, I think we do have to look at what we can fund from the capital purposes fund.
Right. How much we, and again, maybe with some guidance, how much you think you'd like to see come from that account and, you know, with us.
And I think that I would like to see projections that if you build your public safety buildings, what the annual cost of that's going to be, so that we don't start spending two-thirds of the, we can't, but let's say, you know, more than is going to allow for those buildings. I think that has to be part of what we think ahead about too.
So should we ask Dale to generate some rough estimate of public safety?
Yeah, we can. We can make an estimate and then see where it goes after, you know, goes over the course of twenty years.
Both in terms of police station and...
Projections as well, which is not necessarily easy. Because the formula says that if it drops below a certain amount, that that account is no longer funded. Drops below a million dollars, it's unlikely that that would happen. What we need to know is what would be left in current funding, you know, current interest rates. It looks like we'd probably use a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year to pay back a four million dollar note. And that would be fairly consistent over twenty years to pay back. It's the amount of money that's funding, that's funding that account. That's the wild card.
Is that with any money in front, or is that just bonding the whole thing evenly over?
That was just bonding the whole thing. That wasn't, I mean, and that's another option that could be done. I mean, depending on how much money is in the account at that time, you know, we could bond a portion of it and pay for it.
There's something I, I don't know if I mentioned it to the other slogan, and I think I have, but there's something that the selectmen can consider in the fall is a split tax rate. Now, I, I looked at, the thing in the, there was an article in the newspaper about people's tax rates. The various towns around us and stuff like that. Of course, Plumton showed up as being the highest. Well, there's a, there's a bit of an issue in there, because a lot of the towns that we were compared to, like Carver, have a split tax rate. So the, you know, commercial and industrial are paying a lot more. And yes, their residential rate is lower than ours, but most of the towns, I went on the state website, there's an awful lot of data there. I don't know who churns it all out, but if you take the time to look, there's anything you ever wanted to know. Most of the towns that have a split tax rate have about eighty percent residential. With Cisco, we're at seventy percent. So it's, you know, it's, we're in the ballpark as to, as to win most towns. In fact, we're, you know, we're lower than most towns when they start having the split tax rate.
Very few large businesses that own a whole lot of very small businesses, which would have to think about farming, you know, cranberry bogs and all the rest of that. Those are all commercial properties, and they would be taxed accordingly.
Yeah, but they, they all get the sixty-one A benefits and that.
A lot of them, most of them, but not all of them. But still, their, their taxes would go up.
Well, it is, it's not an easy thing to do. I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I fought towns for years. I got Carver to lower theirs. They've gone back up now, the percentage shift that they have, but it's just...
You'll actually then have to look at the benefit to the residential taxpayers too. And I think it would be relatively small, but have to look at it and investigate a little more.
It is, it is a consideration for the new board.
Yeah. Is it a significant amount of money if we changed it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the legislature gave us the spreadsheet. It didn't look like it was... It looked like you had, you had a pretty good, you had much impact.
Yeah.
I don't think it takes much to get a, get a dollar in your tax rate.
Yeah, it does. Get a dollar.
A dollar? Yeah, a good lot.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. My most shifts are fifty.
Something to consider.
Something we can consider. All right, so you get from Dale a rough estimate. What else do you need from us? Now, you mentioned some sense of where this board feels on balancing services versus taxes.
Well, I think, I guess if we, if we stay where we're at and then go back and look at what we can fund out of the capital purpose fund, you know, again, maybe an idea if anything needs to be funded, the special, like if there's budgets and deficits and stuff, I don't know that. Beyond perhaps money for the elementary school roof shovel. And then see, take another look at where we are.
So might we invite you in in a couple of weeks? Is that a reasonable way to go? Is that?
Yeah, two weeks.
Your meeting in two weeks?
Yeah, we need to talk to Barbara, so...
Okay. So let's tentatively think that maybe we'd meet again in a couple of weeks, and if there are major developments, we'll adjust that. Can we definitely make sure we have more subjects like municipal revenue growth factor?
I'm sure Marilyn could probably introduce several. You must know other little thing like that. The only other thing I'll mention, because I talked to Barbara about it, what we did, was the idea of paying off the debt on the school roof and the town... Maybe the town barn?
Barn.
Highway.
Pay them off out of the capital purpose fund, just to get that, that debt payment out of our... Partly because the school roof has been carried so long, they just paid interest for so long. That predates the school building project. That roof, it's the roof on the flat part of the building that was not updated when, I mean, had recently been done. Anyway.
We're further than need a new roof before that's paid off.
Yeah, at the rate we're going. Anyway.
Say that again?
There's some concern that they may need a new roof before the old one is paid off.
At the rate...
At the rate it's going.
So that was just one other, you know, again, your input on, I have the numbers here somewhere, but I don't know where they are.
But was that a debt exclusion?
No, not that roof, no. Yeah, it was to pass, pay off the town barn and the roof. It cost us ninety-eight thousand dollars. And we'd save, I think, twenty-three thousand dollars. Yeah, it would be a net seventy-five thousand dollars to pay them off, I mean, taking it out of the budget. So that was just one I, just to get some of the debt, if we're going to assume the new, if we're going to vote some buildings, and we still have debt, Barbara said it's good to have debt, we still have some more, so...
Well, we're, I don't know where it stands, but we're looking at refinancing our other debt.
Correct.
Which, the equipment and the...
The Denit bonds. I'm not sure exactly where they are. No, they're currently at four point seven, and the treasurer's checking into it to see if it's possible, if we can possibly refinance those, and obviously...
That's debt exclusion.
Yeah, that can't, that can't come out of the capital account. That's the only thing that's limited to the capital account is a debt... That's the only thing that's limited to the capital account, is a debt exclusion, prop two and a half over.
No, no, but I mean, in terms of revenue for us, it's a, it's neutral. So the town, the transfer station and that stuff, that's, you already refinanced that, didn't you? Is that also at a low rate?
Transfer station? No, I don't believe we did that.
I'm going to take a look at that.
Yeah, we haven't done any refinancing of any of it.
And a, a big, yeah, fire equipment maybe, or, or highway equipment.
Highway.
Those were the things we had.
Okay. Great. We are appreciating your efforts.
And there are going to be two seats on the ballot for the finance committee, and there, no one has taken on papers, so in addition to all the many other seats that are open, we would love to encourage people to consider.
And then actually, is the last agenda item, just reminding people, no, that's the perfect segue, that election papers are due in next Monday. There are lots of positions open. There are, all of those are listed on the town website, and we welcome help. This is a wonderful town in terms of talented, accomplished people kind of hiding out over here, and we'd love for them to step forward and give us a hand with all the work we have before us.
And if you miss the deadline, you can run the rate in.
Correct. All right. If I hear nothing else from anywhere, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Check it.
All those in favor? We did it! Good evening, everyone.